Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are going to call the Common Council to order. I will ask the clerk to take a quick roll call.
Alderman Lysick.
Here.
Ranky.
She is excused.
Roat.
Here.
Stefanski.
Here.
Tenorio.
Here.
Vitali.
Here.
Weigel.
Here.
Grisham.
She's excused.
Haas.
Here.
Keen.
Here.
Eight present, two excused.
We have a quorum. Please rise if you are able and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led this evening by Alderman Lysick.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are going to move on to item D on our agendas. We have seven items for public hearing this evening. And guessing by the crowd, I'm going to guess we have people here for at least one of the items, if not several of the items. So the format we have is he will go through the presentation. We will then take questions or comments from the council members. Then we will turn it over to the public if there are items that you wish to speak on. We do ask that you give us your name and your address for our official record before your comments. And I know a lot of you have signed in, but if you haven't, please sign in with your name and address as well. And if there's a way, if a lot of you are here for one thing, if you could potentially maybe appoint one or two people to speak for the group rather than have several people come up and express the same opinions, that might be beneficial in just keeping things moving this evening. So we will open up with, I'll ask the clerk to read public hearing number one.
Resolution for a special use permit for a playground use to be located at 2320-34 South 79th Street.
Mr. Share.
This evening is for St. Paul's Lutheran Church and School. They are interested in constructing a playground on three residential lots just south of the, just south of the school and the 2300 block of 79th Street. The three lots are currently occupied by duplexes. There's owned RB2 Residence District. And what's happening here is basically the, St. Paul's decided they want to demolish the three, the three homes that they own and install a playground. The playground would be accessory to the church and school. However, you know, the, the expansion or the change in use is considered a special use within our zoning ordinance. This is the existing St. Paul's playground area, which consists of a former alleyway, city alleyway, which was vacated years ago. They also store their refuse within this area, within a portion of this alley. But this is where the kids currently play, just south of the school. The three duplexes are then just south of this alleyway. This is a site plan view showing the, the area of, of work, consists of about 19,000 square feet. And the proposed would be to install a rubberized surface for playground equipment, some wood chips under the swings. And then the existing alley would be resurfaced with blacktop. And then the remainder of the site would be grass. There will be a perimeter decorative fence around the property. The, an ornamental variety facing 79th Street at about four feet tall. And then the other three sides facing the alley and then to the south, it would be, would be chain link, a black vinyl coated chain link fence, again four feet tall. There will also be landscaping to screen the, the southern, the southern extent of the property. The fence in this case will be set back roughly about five feet from the property line on all sides. This is a rendering of the, of the playground concept that they'd like to install. It consists of, again, swings, the jungle gym area, a Gaga ball circle. That's the circle circular area you see, somewhat like a kickball game for a small group of people. But interactive, interactive area for kids, it would be open during the, during the daytime hours when school is in session. And then afterward, it would be closed. We did conduct a neighborhood meeting on October 20th. There were a number of neighbors here that were present. Everyone had, in consensus, was, was in consensus with closing the playground after school hours. The south neighbor wanted a setback to the fence, which is achieved in the site plan. And then some of the neighbors didn't like the idea or the potential of children playing or the sounds that are made by children playing. So those were the general comments that we received from the neighborhood. To date though, the planning commission took this up on the 27th of, of October. They did recommend approval of the, of the use and of the site landscaping plans that were presented. There have been two neighborhood meetings to date. One was hosted by St. Paul's back in August, and then the other more recently in October by the city here in this room. And then there was also a publication that was posted in the official paper. And then property owners within 200 feet were notified of the proposed use. So that more or less concludes the presentation. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thanks for the presentation, Mr. Share. Are there any questions from the members of the common council? Mr. Mayor. Alderman Weigel.
It's not so much a question, it's just a comment on the plan commission meeting. I was, I was at the plan commission meeting and, and yes, the plan commission did approve this. But I think the discussion was pretty clear that their approval was based on the look and feel of the playground itself, not on the policy question of whether the playground should be there. I mean, the tax question was brought up, and that's clearly a choice for the council to make. So I just want everybody to understand that although the plan commission did approve it, that was not a policy decision on their part. That's not their role. The policy decision is up to us. Thank you.
Mayor Devine.
Thank you, Alderman Weigel. Alderman Stefanski.
Also, in regards to the meeting that was held, taxes were brought up and these three properties will go off the tax roll once they get torn down, which will then put a burden on the rest of the city of West Dallas to cover those. Also, the church has put in their bulletin that if they had the money, if they have money, they want to build a parking lot. So the two that they already have existing on the other side that they own, they want to acquire a third, they would also then take those three properties off, which would then be a tax burden to residents. So just wanted to clear that up.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Mayor Devine? Just a, just a clarification on what Alderman Stefanski was talking about. This meeting tonight is strictly about a playground. Any possibility of a parking lot lies in the future and is, has not been presented formally, is not part of our discussion tonight. I think, I know that in my mind, I'm pretty clear on, on the thoughts on a parking lot. But I just want everybody to understand that we're not talking about a parking lot tonight. Tonight's discussion is strictly on a playground.
Thank you, Alderman. Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay. Hearing none, then I will ask if there are any comments or questions from the members of the audience. And you can use our podium up here on your left to address us. And as I said earlier, please give us your name and address.
Hi, good evening. James Larson, 2345 South 80th Street. I simply wanted to know if this was going to be lit in the evening.
Not, no, it, it is not going to be open after, after hours.
Lighting, however, is what I'm asking about?
The lighting?
Misunderstand you?
The lighting, yeah. So it's, it's not going to be open during the dark, when it's dark out. So it will not be illuminated.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I'm Scott Stitchin. I'm the property south to this. They are going to give me a five-foot little bump. Is there going to be a chain link fence between mine? I heard there's going to be a nice decorative towards the front, but a chain link down my side?
The current proposal is for a decorative fence along 79th Street.
Okay.
And then the chain link fence is a black vinyl coated chain link is also proposed for the alley frontage, as well as the south property line. So you would, I guess currently the proposal is for a chain link budding your, your property.
Okay.
I mean, we do, we do have representatives of the church here this evening, too, that could be perhaps, you could speak to them about that.
I would like to see something a little nicer down my side. Would be nice. As far as the alley, you don't really see that.
Right.
Are you guys going to keep the dumpsters hidden behind that wall? Are they going to go out to where everybody can see them now?
Well, our typical requirement for dumpsters would be four-sided enclosure. So whether they're kept in, you know, kept out of sight, out of mind, or, you know, that'll be noted on the site plan. Yeah.
All right. That's about all I got. I can live with that if that's what's going to happen.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from the audience on public hearing number one?
Harold Bender, 2367 South 118th Street, West Alice. Dear Mayor Devine, members of the common council, community members and guests, I want to begin by saying that I am very thankful for the direction the leadership of the city of West Alice has taken over the past several years, strengthening our community and increasing the quality of life in West Alice is truly making a difference. I truly appreciate the changes that I've seen, especially in the last six to eight years. The question I would put before you is this, is the playground project of St. Paul's Lutheran Church and School in line with that vision of the leadership of West Alice, or contrary to it? I can tell you that for 150 students at our school, it would clearly increase the quality of life, as you've seen the playground that they have to play on right now. And I believe our neighbors as well. Nearly half of our students are citizens of the city of West Alice. Studies have shown that access to playing at recess is an important part, not only of the physical growth of children, but also the relational and emotional development of children. Our students are quite limited without a full playground to play on. Approval of this project would certainly increase the quality of their lives. Our school programs also stress loving our neighbors as ourselves and being good citizens. And so I would put forth that St. Paul's is a blessing to the community of West Alice as an organization. I know, as has been mentioned, there are some concerns about the loss of tax revenue. Just under $6,000 of taxes come to the city from those three homes to be demolished. Compare that to the investment in our community that the members of St. Paul's are making. When you consider the value of the three homes, the cost of demolition, and the building costs of a modern playground, St. Paul's members are investing $900,000 or so in this project with no tax dollars being spent for this improvement in the quality of life. While I'm not well versed in the legalities of the situation, I have been made aware of a federal law that does not allow governmental entities to prohibit churches from using their property for valid purposes simply for the loss of tax revenue. So I would put to you that there is a legal and ethical question at stake in whatever decision that you make. Finally, though, I would rather appeal to you as to what these United States of America are about, or at least what our founding fathers thought. Our constitution states that we are a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. What people will be served by the decision you make? Approval will certainly serve the people and students of St. Paul's, and I believe our neighbors down the road as well. Who would be served by denying the project? So as you ponder that, please remember that you were elected as servants of the people, not guardians of the treasury. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address?
Jack Berkey, 8536 West Arthur Place. I'm also the principal of the school. A lot of what I had prepared echoes what pastor has mentioned. So I, he saves me the time and you the time. But if you Google the benefits of a playground, you'll find dozens of sites, scientific studies, I should say, extolling the virtues of having a playground available for school-aged children. Never has it been more important than now during the pandemic, when all kinds of limitations are put on social distancing and what kids are available, are allowed to do and not do. And to get them outside is more important than ever. I don't consider playing in an alley as getting our kids outside, you know, as compared to what you see here. There's all kinds of data that I could read to you about physical strength and stamina being improved, cognitive benefits, physical benefits, social benefits, sensory benefits, emotional benefits. But just by coincidence, if you saw in Sunday's paper, there's an article called "Milwaukeeans Turn Concrete School Playgrounds Into Green Spaces," about a movement to do just this, what we're proposing to do, turn concrete into green spaces. I'll read from that article, just a few lines. "All we had was what I would call a concrete jungle where kids played soccer and tag during recess. Every day, I would have to take kids in to see the nurse for bumps, bruises, and scrapes." Our school doesn't have a nurse. You're looking at the nurse, along with my administrative assistant. "Daily, injured, injured kids come in from falling on the concrete, running into the building." He goes on to say, "He had visions of kids coming in from recess with grass stains on their clothes rather than blood stains, a vision that has largely materialized since the completion of the school's revitalization project, which includes a playground with a soft surface, like we're proposing the red area would be, that foam, spongy material, and then wood chips under the, the swings." Their project also added garden beds, which is something that we could do, you know, as far as landscaping goes, and native plants, which we're already proposing to do along the southern border. If anything, he goes on to say, "The pandemic accelerated the interest in our projects." And Milwaukee has passed a, a number of these projects, and that's, again, in this Sunday's Milwaukee Journal, if any of you would like to look that up at some point. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments or questions for the council under public hearing number one? Go ahead.
Evening. My name is Mike Carson. I live at 1201 South 96th Street. I'd like to address you this evening as a parent of the school. I have four children, ages 15 to seven. My oldest is a graduate of St. Paul's, started there as a three-year-old. All my other three children are currently students there right now. My wife was a student at St. Paul's, graduated from there. We are a second-generation family, one of many at the school. We are proud to be in West Dallas. You can see from my T-shirt, WA, St. Paul's, West Dallas. You could call it a part of our brand identity. We've been proud to be a part of St., of West Dallas for over 80 years, serving families in the school. I think nonprofit organizations are a vital part of their communities, and St. Paul's, I think, is a good one for West Dallas. And I see a project like this as a good investment in an organization that I think has been a blessing, and I know has been a blessing to my family, all of whom live here in West Alice. We actually moved here in 2007 and have lived here ever since in two different homes. And one of the main draws to remaining in West Alice has been being connected with St. Paul's Lutheran Church and School. I would ask you to consider that the value to a city of a piece of land is measured in more than simply the number of property tax dollars that it yields. Organizations like St. Paul's enhance the reputation and profile their communities, which draws people like our family to our city. And we're a living example of this. In our 15 years, we have paid 15 years of property tax dollars as well. And we remain here in large part due to St. Paul's. I fear a decision to not approve a legitimate expansion of a nonprofit organization's footprint, such as an appropriately sized playground, simply due to a direct loss of property tax revenue would be a chilling message to nonprofit organizations throughout the city. So I respectfully ask you to approve this project. I see it as a good investment for West Alice. I know it'd be a blessing to students and families of St. Paul's, many of whom are residents like me. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions on public hearing number one? Okay. See, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I missed you.
My name is Bruce Enlik, resident, let's see, 2353 South 78th Street. I just wanted to, I know it was mentioned, I don't know that it's binding, but about the playground being closed in the off, in the non-school hours. And I guess I would really want to see that, I would really want to insist on that. Because, say, having been a longtime resident, we've seen what's happened with the, okay, ideally, you know, you think, okay, parking lot, the playground is not going to be open in the off-hours. But the extended family, the packs of kids we've had going up and down that alley, and, say, we've lost, two years ago, we had an $800 bicycle taken from right outside our back door, well, side door, at four o'clock in the afternoon by a kid walking down the alley that clearly didn't belong, you know, was not a neighborhood resident. So I, I guess I would really just want to stress that, that I want to see the playground not open in the off-hours. I mean, it's gotten so that when I, I'm working out in the yard and I see, or working in the garage, and I have the big door open, and I see one of these packs of kids coming, I actually close the door. And if I have hand tools out there, I've got a can of pepper spray close at hand. So just, you know, my feeling about the number of strangers I see wandering, and they're heading for McCarty Park is what they're doing. They're coming from north of Lincoln. And rather than walk on the street, they go through the alley, and they're just looking. So anyways, just wanted to make that point. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else with comments or questions on our first public hearing? Okay, now we will close public hearing number one. And I will ask the clerk to read out public hearing number two.
Resolution for a special use permit for a community-based residential facility to be located at 8410 West Cleveland Avenue.
Mr. Share.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is a adaptive reuse of an existing and vacant office building at the corner of 84th and Cleveland Avenue. It was formerly a doctor's office, and then over the years, it started out as a one-story building and then became a two-story building in sort of a patchwork of bricks on the, on the outside of the building. But over the past several years, has been empty. The new owner is proposing to reuse this building for a community living arrangement, which would offer 24/7 care for people with advanced age, irreversible, you know, dementia, Alzheimer's, and terminally ill. A similar proposal was before the council back in 2019 and approved. It was just a little bit more dense of a project with, where they were tearing down the existing building and then putting a third, you know, three-story, constructing a three-story building for up to 48 beds. This proposal will offer a community living arrangement, a licensed facility for up to, up to 28 beds. And as such, it's zoned commercial, and under the city's zoning ordinance within that commercial district, care facilities and multifamily uses are considered special uses. So that's the purpose for our hearing this evening. You'll see in the aerial photograph that it is just west of McCarty Park and just north of a smaller, you know, retail set of shops, restaurant to the, to the south of Cleveland Avenue. So the existing property there is Midwest Commercial Funding, who will be contracting with HDG, or Health Dimensions Group, who will manage the business. The Health Dimension Group is, does have a number of facilities throughout the United States. And within Wisconsin, they operate 100-bed, 100 beds in Mequon, just north of us. So these are the existing conditions. We've got the 17,000-square-foot building. There's about 45 parking stalls around the building. There's pretty much zero landscaping, other than the volunteer growth you see in the picture on the bottom. There is an existing cross-axis arrangement between the property to the, to the west and, and this one. That will be maintained as part of this, as part of this site plan and operation going forward. You can see a little bit better on the aerial photogra-, aerial photo on the upper right. This property in the middle pretty much relies on the, the entrance, driveway entrances of Cleveland on, on budding properties on either side of it. And then there is an alley immediately north that provides some access to. But, so that cross-axis will be maintained with the neighbor to the west. This is a site plan. So the, the site is a half-acre site, a 17,000-square-foot building, which equates to roughly about 5,700 square feet per floor. That's utilizing the basement portion. Site access is going to be maintained off of Cleveland Avenue, as well as the 84th Street via the alley into a new parking lot for roughly about 20, 22 parking stalls. There are going to be some new landscaping areas introduced to the site, primarily at the corner, as well as some landscape islands closer to the building and around a patio area in the west side of the building. There is going to be, catch basins are going to be introduced to the site to manage the stormwater runoff. One of the conditions the plan commission has asked the developer to consider is some creative stormwater management techniques, where perhaps some of these, the landscape island, for instance, on the southeast corner, could be utilized to capture some of the, the water runoff and at least hold it for a little while. And then if it were a more significant rain event, there would be overflow tubes to more traditionally dispatch the water. So in terms of parking, 23 parking stalls are, are required. 22 will be provided on site. Again, it's important to note that, you know, residents of this facility do not drive. The parking is really going to be supportive of visitors and that of staff that are, that are working here. And typically, at any given time, there's going to be at least 10 staff people on site to manage a facility. Access into the building, there would be doorways on the east side of the building facing 84th, as well as on the west side of the building. Those would be the more public-facing entrances. There's also a, a staff ingress egress here on the west side of the, of the building for taking out the, the garbage, so to speak. The landscaping plan, there is a pretty nice landscape plan proposed for the site. There's this feature on the west side of the building is actually a light well, which provides light into the lower-level activity area and kitchen area of the dining area of the, of the building. And then there's also a resident patio on the west side of the building over here. These are some renderings of the proposed new look. Again, just redoing the existing building that's already there, complete facelift on the exterior, as well as a complete remodel of the interior space. It'll feature stone exterior, you know, stonework on the outside, a canopy feature that wraps around the, the buildings east and south side. There'll be a sill, pre-cased sill as a transition between the siding material and the stone. And then the, the wood-like siding that you see there is actually an engineered wood product that looks like a wood siding, but it's actually a cementitious lap siding. And just some exterior, again, elevations submitted by the architect. Part of these windows will be operable. The others will be stationary. And we just take a tour, we're starting in the basement and working ourselves up through the second floor of the building. The basement area, this will all be serviced via elevator, as well as staircases within the building. But the lower level is primarily going to be dining, an activity room area with a kitchen, and then break rooms for staff, and then some back-of-house areas for staff as well. Moving up to the first floor, we'll have roughly about 11 units, residential units on the first floor. Again, the access points here, an entry point on facing Cleveland Avenue, another facing. Again, the access points here, an entry point on facing Cleveland Avenue, another facing, vestibule area facing 84th Street. And then the second floor will feature 12 units and up to 15 residents. The building will be secured to prevent people from eloping, you know, so there are modern techniques to keep people, you know, safely within the building and, and not walking out into the parking lot or, or street. So Plan Commission has reviewed this and recommended approval on the 27th of October. Again, just following the typical Class II requirements, it was published in the official paper, and notice within, people within 200 feet were notified. To date, no objections. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the council members have comments or questions on public hearing number two?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigle.
Steve, you mentioned a patio for the residents. I don't, that would be fenced in and part of the inside secured area. I don't, I guess I don't see a fence here in any of these renderings.
Yeah, I'll go back to that, Marty. So the patio area, the only fence that's proposed is around the light well area to prevent someone from falling in.
Mm-hmm.
The other area that, on the west side is, there's a building just immediately west of this property line, which does provide some form of a barrier. And then there's a landscaping area both on the north and south sides of that patio. These areas outside would be managed by a staff person with, with residents, or a family member with residents. It wouldn't be for someone just to sit out there all alone.
I guess that was my concern. So this, this is the kind of facility that I, I would call a memory care facility, where, as you said, the terminally ill dementia patients, the patients are not, residents, we'll say, are not allowed to just leave of their own volition. They need to be checked out by somebody, or buzzed out. And, and I guess my concern was that you have a outside resident or patio area for them, but they'd have to be buzzed out to that, I assume, just so they're not wandering around the neighborhood, so.
That, that's a good point, Marty. And yeah, there would be security measures in place by staff and management here to keep, to prevent that from happening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from the council? Hearing none. Are there any members of the audience with comments or questions on public hearing number Okay, seeing none, we will close our second public hearing, and I will ask the clerk to read our third public hearing.
Resolution for a special use permit for an automobile, convenience store, and gas station used to be located at 2904 South 84th Street.
Thank you. Mr. Scher.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is a, the gas station, actually, it's currently an empty site, vacant roughly for the past two decades. It was, once upon a time, back in the 50s and 60s, a, a gas station, and then later became a real estate office, and, and has been vacant for probably about 25 years or so since. The property is Zoned C3, Community Commercial District. There's a proposal, which we'll get into, for a gas station with a convenience store at this site. The brand name on this is a Foran Amico Gas Station, and gas stations, convenience stores are considered special uses within this zoning district. So the, the new gas station would feature four, four gas pumps. It would be roughly 3,900 square feet in area. It would include an area for hot food. No alcohol sales would be present at this location. The hours of operation were originally stated as 24 hours, seven days a week. However, after some meetings with the neighborhood, neighborhood meeting, it was curtailed and brought back to 5:00 AM to 11:00, Monday through Saturday, and then Sundays, 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And the, in terms of a traffic increase, represents under 1% of, of an increase of new trips for, for this area. Most of the trips occurring in this area are already on Beloit or on 84th Street. The new trips, in fact, would likely be someone from the neighborhood or nearby, needs to fill up the, the lawnmower or the, the snow blower, and makes a trip up to this location to, to fill up, or to come in and, and shop for a soft drink. So we had roughly about 25 or so people at a neighborhood meeting on October 21st. Most of the, you know, the adjustments that were heard were, you know, nuisance type of concerns. You know, the, the concern with added sounds, disruption to the enjoyment of your property, vapors from a gas station, so health concerns. The hours of operation were, were a concern, and those have since been, you know, scaled back. Landscaping and screening concerns. The refuse location was somewhat of a sticking point, and the property owner has since agreed to relocate that. And then, so just some general questions on grading and stormwater. Certainly, no one wants their basement to flood, and so managing stormwater on-site, so it doesn't become a problem for the budding property owners, was, was also discussed. So the proposed plan that was, you know, presented to the Planning Commission and at the neighborhood meeting is shown here. Pretty much includes perimeter landscaping around the site. There are residential properties to the south and to the east. To the north is Capri, to the west is the Village at Manor Park. So the building is roughly about 3,900 square feet in, in the yellow-orange color, and then the canopy will be immediately out in front of that. The gas tanks that you see here, these are underground, but there will also be parking on-site, surface parking stalls, and then also the refuse area here. This refuse enclosure is actually going to be shifted closer to the building to move it further away from a nearby budding residential home. Also, with the perimeter landscaping, the idea here is that there's also going to be a, a solid screen fence around the property in addition to the landscaping, again, to best, you know, try to buffer nearby residences on, on both the south and to the east. In terms of architectural, the four sides of the building will be, will feature a brick veneer product, and there'll also be that, an engineered wood grain entry feature into the vestibule and to get into the building on the front side, north side of the building. And then the gas pump canopy will also feature brick about three-quarters of the way up the supports. And then the style of roof on the canopy is to mimic like a hipped roof, a more residential look than you typically see on most gas stations in the metro area. This is the floor plan proposal, the entry being on the north side. And then the, the areas that aren't colored in yellow here are public, public-facing areas for grocery items, merchandise, access to the cooler areas and counter areas for where, where food would be prepared and, and served. So the yellow areas are just basically just sort of your retail clerk office areas, mechanical areas, and then the actual kitchen for food prep. So Plan Commission has recommended approval. There are a number of conditions of approval, many of which have been satisfied by the, by the applicant. Of note, though, there is a, a taller variety of landscaping that's been, that was recommended at the neighborhood meeting and by the Plan Commission for taller trees around the perimeter of the site, again, to sort of buffer those sightlines to the next-door neighbors. And then also to submit a paving and drainage plan to show how they're going to deal with stormwater, so it doesn't become a problem for, for the next-door neighbors. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there comments or questions from the members of the common council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Roeb.
Steve, at the last Plan Commission meeting, I was of the impression that the applicant was going to close at 10:00 from 11:00. Did you miss that, or has it been changed? Does he?
I believe, I'm sorry, I believe it has changed. It has, it has changed. What do we have in here? Do we have 11? Yeah. It's been, it's been changed to 10:00 PM.
So it's 10:00?
Yeah.
Thank you, Steve.
I'll double-check the resolution. I think we've got it correctly in the resolution. I apologize that it's not here in the presentation.
Any other comments or questions from the council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Weigle.
I used to routinely ask the kitchen exhaust fan question, and I have it lately on new buildings, but it's brought to mind because we're having a little conflict in one of, in my district with a restaurant and their smell. I assume they're going to have deep fryers with the attendant exhaust hood, and the question is, is the fan blowing straight out the wall into a neighbor's backyard, or is it going to go up vertically through the roof?
The idea is to go straight up through the roof, rather than directing it towards, you know, to the south.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Keen.
Uh, Steve, I miss, did they submit the drainage plan, or is that yet to be done?
Uh, that's yet to be submitted. So the, the civil plans for the actual runoff pattern and how they're going to manage water on-site is going to be, it, it's a condition of approval, and will be submitted at a later date.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Vitale.
Yeah, the last, of course, 27 years, you know, the, the building, you know, we all know it's been vacant. Even for a couple of years, Capri was down, you know, just as well. But again, you know, I don't think we need a blight property. You know, if, if we had some other businesses come through years back, I mean, it's been 27 years, so, so if somebody, you know, tried to invest most, actually, it would be almost a million dollar to, to follow, I mean, you know, for this type of business. I mean, I don't see really anything wrong, you know. I mean, a gas station's throughout the city and community, they're next to neighbors, you know, and many cases, you know, they put up nice fences, you know. I mean, I really, I don't see any issue with that at all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? There's only three of you left. Is anyone? All right. Seeing none, we will turn it over to see if anyone in the audience has comments or questions on this public hearing. The same format, please come up to the podium and give us your name and address.
Hi, I'm Peggy Bits, and I live at 8355 West Beloit, which is right next to the proposed gas station and convenience store. And I'd just as soon not have it open up, but all in all, I like the design of the building. It appears to be that the business people that are opening up seem to know the neighborhood well and what they're doing. I just wanted to verify, the hours were changed, not on, on the slide, but they were changed from 5:00 to 10:00, correct? And then what about Sundays? Are they going to still be open till 10:00, or is it 6:00 PM?
Steve, do you remember?
I had talked briefly with the new owners, and I don't know what they decided for Sunday.
He's checking.
Just checking for the
Resolution?
Resolution here, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I believe it is 10:00 is the closing time for Sunday as well.
On Sunday?
On Sunday.
Oh, all right.
Okay.
And, boy, West Alice rocks. I, with all these new businesses, I hope our taxes will go down, maybe. And also, I'm concerned, because my property's right next door, and I don't want to be exposed to the people coming in and out of the convenience store pumping gas, unless, of course, it's Giannis, because he could see over a six-foot fence. But they said they'd put a six-foot fence up. I want to make sure that it's level to the building and to the gas pumps and everything, so that it's a definite six feet tall. It's not going to slope down, be shorter on one end than the other, because that lot does slope down.
Do you want to handle that one, Steve?
Thank you, Peggy, yes. And that, that will be the, the goal with the, with the grading plan that's going to be submitted. They will have to address the grades on that site, because everything does fall off.
Right.
And, you know, reduce an elevation as you go further south.
So they definitely are going to keep it a solid six feet, because that's the only way I'll, I'll have any security, you know, and privacy is to maintain the six feet.
Yep.
Um, like I said, if it's a basketball player, they're going to see over six feet anyways, but.
If they, if they do it wrong, Alderman Vitale, you'll be able to see over it.
I will. That's for sure. Don't worry about me at all. I don't want to be able to see over it.
Okay, and I just wanted to bring up, I don't, I, I thought that they
Oh, Doug didn't like that joke.
Okay. Regarding music by the pumps, I thought the pumps were going to be like, not two and two, they were going to just be four and down towards the middle more. But our, I've gone to gas stations where they don't have music, and I've gone to, like, 92nd and Cleveland, they don't have music at that VP. And in the Speedway, they, you know, have music. I personally don't like the music, and since my house is going to be maybe 20 feet from the gas pumps, where I have windows, I'm wondering if they could possibly not have the ga, the music that, along with the gas pumps? I'm just
That's certainly possible, and it's something that we did build into the resolution, it's before council tonight, about your volume control, or being able to turn off the audio if that is a thing on the pumps, so.
Are you talking to me?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, I was just, just responding, yeah.
That they could, they could turn it down or turn it off?
Yeah.
Oh, good. And as far as the, the fence, if they're going to put it up to their property line, and I have a fence on my property line, who's going to make sure that there isn't a gap where there's going to be trees growing and weeds and all that, and who would take care of that? Where the two fences meet, or would that be something where maybe they'd consider talking to me about taking my fence down, which I really don't want to, because it hooks up to the rest of the yard? And it's a cyclone fence, and the, the one they're putting up is a white plastic fence, six feet tall? So what if there's a gap there where there's going to be a problem with weeds and trees growing?
I think that's best, we maybe talk, perhaps after the public hearings, with, with the applicant who's here this evening, and just see if we can come up with a solution to that.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. And the dumpster will have, it, it'll be enclosed, right?
Correct, yes.
There's going to be walls around it? I guess that's it.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions on public hearing number three?
James Larson, 2345 South 80th Street. I originally came here to object to this, but after hearing what I have heard, I, I can see where this would work. My concern was with noise and traffic and disruption to an otherwise very, very quiet neighborhood that's surrounded by quiet business and one restaurant across the street. But you've convinced me those are not, I'm not, I'm not here at this particular moment to object to those, only to say that I don't think we all need constant stimulation with this, with the music and advertising, et cetera, at the gas pumps. I find that personally just to be very distracting and unnecessary, so that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Any other audience members have comments on our third public hearing this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will close our third public hearing, and I will ask the clerk to read out, I believe, four and five together?
Yes. Ordinance to amend the official West Alice zoning map by rezoning property located at 1359 South 84th Street from RB2 Residential District to C2 Neighborhood Commercial submitted by the city West Alice.
Thank you.
And resolution for a special use permit for an automobile, convenience store, and gas station to be located at 8404 West Greenfield and 1359 South 84th Street.
Thank you. Mr. Scher.
Thank you, Mayor. So the, the two hearing items involve an expanded project area. The, the gas station, which is, which used to be auto-analyzers in the northwest corner of 84th and Greenfield, has been purchased by a developer who wants to put in a gas station, a convenience put in a gas station and convenience store. That was before the common council earlier this year, and since that time, he's reached out to one of the property owners to the north and offered to purchase that property. That property to the north is actually zoned, R.B. Two Residential, uh, Residential District, and it's occupied by a single-family home. So the, the idea is that the, uh, gas station developer would purchase that property, demolish it, and then expand the project area for the, uh, the gas station, the new gas station of that corner. So it's, uh, it's roughly about a sixty, six hundred square foot, single-family residential lot, and by rezoning it to C. Two, it would allow for automobile convenience, you know, gas stations. The, uh, the residential lot, as well as some of the other budding lots in that area, it's important to note, are in conformance, uh, they are actually commercial, shown as commercial land uses, so it is in conformance, the rezoning would be in conformance with the twenty forty land use plan. So consistency would be achieved in, in a rezoning. And the next, um, item here is for the special use portion of this. Again, that expanded project area is shown in the lower right, um, which would encompass the two lots, and demolishing, basically demolishing the existing auto-analyzers building, which is about twenty-five hundred square feet, and then purchasing the house to the north, demolishing that, constructing a new sixty-two hundred square foot gas station, and then the, uh, the gas station area, the built, new building, I should say, would also feature two retail tenants to the west side of the new building. The proposed hours are indicated as five A.M. to midnight. That's been curtailed from a twenty-four seven operation to five A.M. to midnight. And then the convenience store will sell general groceries, cigarettes, coffee, and there would be a food prep area as well. No alcohol sales will take place from this property, and, um, these are just some other pictures of the existing situation. And now we'll start to get into some of the surrounding context to, to the west, I should say to the north. You've got a single-family and two-family neighborhood. To the west is a multifamily building. And this is the proposed new site plan, including the single-family lot, which is before, for rezoning as well. Feature roughly about twenty-some parking stalls and four pump islands, or up to eight cars. Access points to the site would be changed with one access point on Eighty-fourth, one on Greenfield Avenue. Refuge area would be on the northwest side of the site, close to the building, and then perimeter landscaping would be installed around all, all four sides of the property. This is a look at the proposed internal area for the gas station convenience store only. There, there are two other resident, or two other tenant spaces, commercial tenant spaces to the west, which are unidentified at this point, but this focus here is just purely on the retail convenience area for the gas station. Again, featuring an office and cashier area, food displays and a coffee counter area, small kitchenette for food prep, and then the general merchandise area in gray. These are the, the exterior look of the building, which features, features four-sided architecture, brick, um, and some, um, concrete masonry around the exterior of all four sides. There's an engineered wood product on the, the two corridors into the, into the building, both for the gas station convenience store here and then for the future retail over here. And will feature a standing seam metal roof, which is also carried over to the proposed canopy over the pump islands. So plant commission has reviewed this and recommended approval on the twenty-seventh of October, and, um, proprietors within, in the neighborhood within two-hundred feet have been notified, and it has been published in the official paper. There have been a, a couple objections to date. However, those, those objections primarily focus on the traffic volumes, just, I guess, bad behaviors of, of some drivers on both Eighty-fourth and/or Greenfield Avenue with speeding as you come around a corner, or, um, as you're going west on, um, on Greenfield Avenue from a two-lane each-way Greenfield Avenue to, uh, a tapered-down west of Eighty-fourth, Greenfield Avenue, people trying to, uh, shoot through, you know, at the last minute. So I think it just primarily was focusing on bad driving behaviors, not necessarily this use. Thank you.
Thank you. Any members of the common council have comments on public hearings four or five?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Keen.
Um, I'll take Marty's cue. The exhaust vent will be going up, not out, towards the west, correct?
Correct, right.
Um, and then I just did want to address, um, Alderwoman Grisham. I had received some concerns. Again, it was more based upon, um, traffic, cars coming up Eighty-fourth, trying to merge over. Speaking with the potential owner of this resident, he doesn't want any disturbance. He has a great plan, um, extra security cameras. He's cognizant that there are residential neighbors around, um, you know, not taking out the garbage exactly at midnight to wake up all the neighbors. So I, I did just want to notate that the owner has been more than willing to listen to the concerns and change what's needed based on the resident's concerns. So I really just wanted that to be notated, um, to the public, that he's very cognizant of wanting to blend in with the community and not have, um, a nuisance gas station that could have crime and other possible issues. And as Steve has stated, there's not alcohol being sold at this property, so I think that that has a difference as well.
Thank you. Alderman Stefanski.
Um, I just want to get a clarification. I believe last time we talked about this, Alderwoman Ranky brought up about cigarettes being sold there. Was that whole issue with them selling them at Walgreens been resolved, that they're allowed to sell there? I thought that was the whole, that they weren't going to be able to sell them there.
So this, uh, this place, uh, the proposed use here, the gas station, will sell cigarettes. I mean, they're proposing to. However, it's going to be a very small portion of the business. It'll be only a small display case behind the counter, and only accessible, uh, patron comes in and asks for a, a pack of cigarettes, for example, the clerk will, will hand them to him. It's not going to be, uh, it's not a tobacco retailer, um, so it's a very small portion. I think it's maybe a hundred square feet of the store will be for tobacco-related items. So it doesn't, it doesn't come into the, um, the zoning, um, classification of a tobacco retailer, so there isn't that separation clause, uh, that we, that we would otherwise have if it were, um, if that were purely the use here.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, are there any questions from the members of the audience on public hearing four or five?
Hi, Marie Ulrich. I'm at one-three-five-five South Eighty-fourth Street, directly north of that area. And I was just wondering, the length of the building? I, I have a side door on my house that goes right to my driveway, which would be right next to the building. Is there any privacy past the ends of the building that I don't have? You know, if there's mischief out there, where there are people that would easily be able to get to my back door, is what I guess my concern is.
Mm-hmm.
Just because I've been in the neighborhood for almost forty years there, in that house, and, um, I just don't want people wandering over from there to me.
Sure. Yeah.
So there, there is a fence indicated along the north property line, and then I believe it does wrap, um, around the backside of the building here to the west.
That's my main concern.
Yeah.
It's that it would be nice to have a fence of some sort, so they can't go from there to me, so...
Good.
Just a safety concern.
Yep, thank you. You're welcome.
Hi, Beth Miller. I'm at thirteen twenty-seven South Eighty-fourth Street, so also north of this property. I was just wondering, are the hours till midnight for the convenience store and the gas pumps, or just the gas pumps?
Uh, I believe it's both, yeah.
Okay. Because I have some concern with the store being open till midnight, um, just in, in that neighborhood and, you know, the heavy traffic and the noise, the concern about crime.
Sure.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on these two items for public hearing? Seeing none, we will close public hearings four and five. And I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number six.
Ordinance to amend the official West Dallas zoning map by rezoning property located at eighty-five thirty dash fifty-six West National Avenue from M. One Manufacturing District and C. Two Neighborhood Commercial to C. Two Neighborhood Commercial submitted by John P. Chan, Bethesda Lutheran Communities.
Thank you. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. We received a, uh, application for, to request a rezoning by developer, Bethesda Lutheran is interested in developing a multifamily development at this site. However, in taking a look at the existing site, it's currently split zone, so you have, um, light industrial zoning, um, and, and partially commercial, commercial zoning. So, um, for any, for any development of this site, it would be best rezoned to C. Two in conformance with our comprehensive land use plan, uh, which is shown on the bottom. So the upper slide here, image, is the existing split zoning that's occurring on the site. You can see the frontage being commercial, the backage being light industrial. And then, uh, down here on this lower map, you can see the future land use plan, which calls for a mixed-use, um, development or mixed-use land use classification. Rezoning it to C. Two would not only promote multifamily development, but also mixed-use development as a special use. So while we're not reviewing an actual multifamily development this evening, it would be a future submittal before the planning commission and common council, uh, what we are recommending approval of is a, uh, a rezoning to eliminate the split zoning, and then to rezone this property to, uh, to commercial, C. Two. This is the existing building that's there today. It's the Clark Oil Building. So plant commission has reviewed this and has recommended approval, and, uh, we have not received any objections to date.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any comments from the council on this item?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Keen.
Uh, Steve, I know we were looking at potentially doing a traffic study. That hasn't been, has that been completed yet?
Uh, yeah, we just did receive, uh, the draft of the traffic study, and that will be coming, coming to you soon.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, are there any questions or comments on this item from the audience? Okay. Seeing none, we will close public hearing number six, and I will ask the clerk to read our seventh and final public hearing.
Ordinance to amend the official West Dallas zoning map, amending section twelve-point-zero-five for certain properties along the Highway one hundred corridor in alignment with the twenty forty comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Tony?
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Geron.
So this, uh, seventh item and final one is for the rezoning of fifty-one properties along Highway one hundred corridor between Greenfield Avenue and just south of Oklahoma Avenue. So generally, throughout this rezoning, we're proposing to change the zoning from M. One and C. Four to C. Three, though there are a handful of properties that are zoned residential, and we're just cleaning up some of the, the split zoning, so keeping it all residential. This rezoning is consistent with the twenty forty comprehensive plan and our future land use map, and is also consistent with last year's Highway one hundred corridor study, which calls for a dynamic range of uses. So the main purpose behind the rezoning is to avoid undesirable uses, so going to C. Three, we would not have, uh, certain uses would not be permitted. Nominal-priced retail stores, also known as dollar stores, outdoor vehicle dealerships, check cashing businesses, kennels, pawn shops, thrift, and some manufacturing uses like material processing, waste and recycling, warehousing, self-storage. And I just also wanted to note that certain uses would still be allowed in C. Three, for example, vet clinics, medical clinics, hotels, and shopping centers. The rezonings would also allow for denser development, which is great because we would, this would help to grow the Highway one hundred corridor by increasing the maximum floor area ratio and also removing any required setbacks for the front, at least. Another purpose of the rezoning would be to remove some of the split-zone properties. While this helps clean up a lot of our zoning map, this, this, um, isn't the best, uh, there are a few, a few cases where split zoning is actually, um, would actually benefit certain businesses, and I'll, I'll get to an example later. So really important to note here is that this would create some non-conforming uses, but some uses, uh, when rezoned, uh, they become legal non-conforming. Those businesses can continue to operate. When that business leaves, the same use can operate in that space if occupancy is within twelve months of the prior business leaving. So for example, you have, say, a dollar store and a strip mall, and that dollar store leaves, the owner of that strip mall can have another dollar store come in, uh, as long as it's within twelve months, so they can come in at the eleventh month. But if that one year lapses, then they can't come back in, another dollar store can't come back into the same space. So this is just a look at some of the, the rezoning maps, working our way from Greenfield down to Oklahoma. And here's a list of the properties. In bold are, are the, the affected properties and businesses that would become non-conforming. So we have a couple self-storage spaces, businesses, uh, the Milwaukee County Shop, Price-Erecting, uh, a couple check-cashing businesses, Dollar Tree, and Able Distributing. Now, we, we have received four letters of opposition, and I just wanted to remind the council that removing an item from the list of properties to be rezoned is within your authority and does not require us to conduct another public hearing. So first one here is South Town Shopping Center. They are opposing the rezoning from C. Four to C. Three because it eliminates the ability to lease to dollar stores. They currently have a dollar store in there, so I think their, their concern is just not being able to replace that business. The former Hub Chrysler site sent us a letter today. The owner doesn't want to limit their options for any future development. The Menard Store is split-zoned. You can see they have, uh, manufacturing in the rear of their, uh, area. That's where they have a lot of their building, uh, products, uh, their lumberyard, and then they also have a little, uh, slice of residential up at the top there. So, uh, they just want to retain their option to sell to a light industrial M. One user. They haven't stated who exactly, but, um, that could be any one of the examples that I gave before of, of manufacturing uses. And the fourth is Able Distribution at sixteen fifty South one hundred and eighth Street. About five years ago, common council approved a rezoning ordinance for the site to be split-zoned, and the reason for that was to allow for them to have their showroom in the front of their buil, uh, building, and then in the rear, they would maintain their, uh, distribution center, and that could be, uh, zoned correctly as light industrial. Ownership has approached us and, uh, said that they want to preserve the current split-zone while working with staff on an ordinance amendment to allow for a commercial light industrial flex use. This coincides with a, uh, zoning code update that we are, staff is currently working on, and, uh, one of the things that we hope to bring forward to council for further discussion is exploring a zoning option to create that commercial light industrial flex use, uh, and, and then we would, uh, work out the intensity and proportion of this mix, uh, and that would vary by commercial district. And, uh, the Highway one hundred, uh, corridor study that was released last year also supports the creation of the flexibility within the, the zoning ordinance. In the October plant commission meeting, uh, they recommended approval of the rezoning. A lot of the, all of the property owners within... A lot of the, all of the property owners within 200 feet have been, have received notice, and we have hosted two informational meetings to date. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the Common Council on public hearing number seven? Okay, seeing none, are there any questions, comments from the audience on public hearing
Good evening. Robert Schmidt, 311 East Chicago Street, Milwaukee. Our firm's been developing in West Alice for the past 23 years. We currently own three properties on Highway 100. We redeveloped the former Borden property site into the Sam's Club and the McDonald's Starbucks in front. We redeveloped the Hub Chrysler site into the Who-Hot AT&amp;T building up there with the Auto Zone. We also are in the middle of redeveloping the Office Max property. We redid the FNF Tire for Blaze Pizza and then Spectrum. After Blaze went out, added the Aspen Dell. And most recently, we built the new Cousins Sub on 65th and Greenfield. So we have a long history of corporate citizenship in West Alice, and we love being here and we love doing business. So our opposition is for Site 51, which Tony has up on the screen. Our unique circumstance is that we have raw land. These other properties, if they have legal non-conforming uses, they can continue to use them or find replacement tenants. We've owned this for eight and a half years. We've never gotten any traction on the back parcel with getting it redeveloped. We have entertained proposals from some of the uses you're trying to zone out. We've had two car dealership proposals come before us, from the Wild Group and from Carvana. We had a discount retailer originally, which was Goodwill. Ironically, the site to the south where Goodwill is, is not being rezoned to restrict them, but ours is. We've also had a proposal from a pharmaceutical manufacturer to go there. So that's another, it's material processing that would be zoned out. So, Tony, can you put up the site, the plan that shows Highway 100, it's sort of in totality at the south end? I just want to point out one other unique feature of the rezoning map. If you look on the left side, you can see that they've captured every property on the east side of Highway 100, all the way down to the city border. But if you look at the west side, our property sort of sits out there as an island. No properties around us are getting rezoned, including the 50-year-old skating rink, the church that was in the old Goodwill site, the old gas station on the corner. So, you know, nothing's being rezoned around to help us, yet we're being singled out as raw land and having our hands tied. So for that reason, we're requesting that our property be removed from this rezoning process. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Brad Dig, and I'm here on behalf of the 1650 South 108th Street Ownership Group. I'm at N19W24400 Riverwood Drive. I appeared at the Plan Commission, and I also wanted to remind the council that five years ago, I also appeared before you in the Plan Commission to work with the Planning Department staff to obtain the split zoning that exists today for the Able property and the Able building. And I think you can see the result of that, that it's a thriving business with the national company as a tenant in that property. In order to appeal to this particular tenant, first of all, they needed a lot of square feet. They have, you know, approximately 70,000 square feet that they're using. They take up the whole building. It's, I'm here to emphasize that it is a unique property, and I'm going to ask you to observe that after meeting with staff and talking about it, I'm here to ask you to remove this property from the list for rezoning today. I have pledged and have the authority of my client to work with staff to develop that commercial light industrial flex use, which would mirror the current use of that property. It's such a unique property. The building takes up almost the whole lot. There's a small amount of outside storage at the back of the property. And then if you know the area behind this building, it's all M1 Manufacturing District. And so the split zoning, although I generally agree that it's not the greatest thing to have, this is the textbook example of why split zoning is a good thing. But I think that zoning can be accommodated by way of the proposal of staff to develop a commercial and light industrial flex use, which would likely be under either the C3 zoning or, that's to be determined, and I'm willing to throw some input into that since I have had some experience at drafting ordinances. So the long and the short of it is, is as you look at this property, you know, five years ago, and five years have gone by, and what we projected and what we had hoped for has come true. This property is a shining star in the community. My clients took off about 35 feet of the old Lackey and Joy's block brick building and put this facade on there, which exactly conforms to the proposed 2040, you know, comprehensive plan for the city and particularly the Highway 100 corridor. If you look at that 2040 plan, which I did read, and even though it was very long, but I did read it, this property does match exactly what you're looking for along the Highway 100 corridor. You've got the commercial use up front. There's a design studio up front. There's retail up front. And yes, indeed, in the back, there is a distribution center, and there is a contractor entrance around the back, and there is outside storage. But this is a big building, as I mentioned. It's about 70,000 square feet. So ultimately, when we look at the plan objectives for 2040 plan and even the Highway 100 study, this building, as it has been remodeled by my clients, matches those objectives. It creates excellent taxable property value. It's provided a lot of jobs, provided a great facade along Highway 100, superior quality renovations. I think, frankly, I was quite impressed with the end result, and I hope you are too. So at the end of the day, my goal here is to ask you to remove that from the list so I can work with staff to either modify the C3 zoning or create this commercial light industrial flex district that would allow my client to continue. If you change this to C3, there's the grave danger of one-third of this building having to be torn down, which would create a huge amount of problems. Obviously, the tax-based loss, certainly a significant loss in value of the property. And the reason for that is it's hard to find a tenant that'll take up this whole building. My client remodeled the whole building to accommodate this size tenant. They're appealing to the national company. This Able is a solid company with a national reputation. They're partnered up with Kohler, another great company. So at the end of the day, this is a unique property. I'm asking you to recognize that and remove it from the list of rezoning for now and allow us to study options so that the comprehensive long-term plan from the 2040 plan can be met and we can propose a flex district that would allow, you know, basically to not have the split zoning, which I think staff is trying to get away from split zoning. But I think the flex district could accommodate both my client's needs and the city's goals and allows us to maintain the value of that property, not just for my clients, but for the tenant and for the city in general. So with that, I thank you for your time and appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Any other members of the audience have comments on public hearing number seven? Okay. We will close our final public hearing. Thank you, everybody, for being here and participating. Often, we don't have a crowd, and we feel a little lonely, but it's glad to see people taking part in the process. It's good to see the room full. Item E is citizen participation. This is the opportunity for the council to receive information from members of the public during this 30-minute period. Once again, we'll ask you to announce here our name and address, sign in at the podium, and please limit your comments to one statement of no more than five minutes. Council can't take action on the topics because they would not be properly agendized. But does anybody wish to address the council under citizen participation this evening? Okay, seeing none, we will close citizen participation. Item F is the announcement of our standing committees. They will be meeting during recess. The room numbers are listed on page two of your agendas. Item G is the mayor's report, which I printed and left on the printer in my office, so I'm going to try to do it from memory. Just a reminder that this Saturday, there is going to be a food drive by the Community Improvement Foundation at the West Alice Farmers Market to bolster up the supplies for all of our community food pantries. There is also an opportunity to, with your donation, to enter young children to help me light the city Christmas tree this year, which leads me to, and again, the times, I believe, are 11:30 till 2:30. Thank you. And it will overlap with the operation of the farmers market, so there will be farmers and food trucks and coffee things there for people. The Christmas, Kris-Kindle Market will also be taking place again this year after not taking place last year, and that will be on the same weekend of our Christmas parade, which is December 3rd and 4th. The Kris-Kindle Market will have about 50-plus vendors selling specialty food goods, and there will be some restaurants represented there. I believe West Allian Brewing is working on serving some of their Christmas beer, as well as some other local delicacies and other places from around the state. That takes place on the evening of Friday, December 3rd, and on the day of December 4th. It does wrap up before the Christmas parade for the city, which goes through our downtown, and that starts on the evening of December 4th. And the last thing I had from my memory is that the city's fall leaf pickup was extended. It does end on the 21st of November. So I'm sure I'm forgetting something, but that does conclude the mayor's report. Moving on to item H, are there any alderpersons' reports? Seeing none.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move for approval of the minutes of November 2nd, 2021.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any changes to the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item J, standing committee reports.
Yeah, Lysick and Health.
Alderman Vatali?
Yes, we have item nine, which have been approved, but the, if the complete occupancy inspections are completed, otherwise we can hold that one.
Nine and 10?
Yeah.
Okay.
So then the other one is item 10, which is the same situation. If all inspections are completed, of course, we can vote on it. Otherwise, we can hold it.
Is that correct, Rebecca?
Yes.
Ms. Geron.
Item 10 is the only one that has, they've satisfied all of the inspections. Item number nine has not. So I would, based on the committee's recommendation, I believe they would like to grant item number 10.
And hold item nine.
And hold item nine.
Do you want to make, hold item nine and approve item 10?
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I move for the approval based on the Lysick and Health Committee report.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Attorney Decker.
Just because this is a new process, I want to make sure the council's aware of what's going on. The committee is hearing license applications for retail alcohol licenses, and if they feel that the applicant should be granted a license, they're doing so. However, those licenses are going to be held at council until they are able to satisfy any type of occupancy permits, any type of licensure with maybe health department or other entities, to ensure that when they are given their alcohol license, they are ready to operate at that time. So that's what's going on here. Number 10 has satisfied those conditions, and that's why the chair has moved for adoption of that one. Number nine has not satisfied those conditions, so it will be held over until the December meeting, and it will appear on another standing report at that time.
Perfect. Thank you for the clarification. If there's no other discussion.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Wagle.
I guess I have a question. So that means the soonest that the applicant at item number nine would be granted his license would be the next time we meet.
If they wait until the next regular meeting, yes. In theory, there could be a request for a special meeting.
Right.
Which would be at the council's discretion whether they want to call that.
Yeah, I understand we could have a special. But I believe in the past, we would have approved it pending that, and then the day after they get their inspections squared away, they could open. But with this new process, they'll have to wait until the full council meets again.
Correct. For legal reasons, the council should not approve a license with conditions upon it.
Okay.
Again, because there are some negative cases out there if that happens, which I would rather avoid. So that's why this new process will ensure that the city will not be at risk for anything the way it's doing, yet it still allows some flexibility. I think the clerk and I may be presenting something in the future that might also make this even a little more flexible, so we'll see if we can do that in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I feel it's a proper procedures, really. I mean, I think that's the way to go.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Who's the second?
Oh, who second? Did we second?
Second.
Alderman Keen was the second.
As this came out of committee, there doesn't necessarily need to be a second.
Oh, yeah.
That's right.
Unseconded.
I'll still put it on there.
All right. And then the vote still counts, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Thank you. Item K, then we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
If there's no objection from any members of the council, I would move that the items on the consent agenda be approved as printed.
No separate action? Is there any discussion? We'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Alderperson Lysick.
Aye.
Ranky.
Aye.
Roat.
Aye.
Stefanski.
Aye.
Tenorio.
Aye.
Vatali.
Aye.
Weigel.
Aye.
Haas.
Aye.
Keen. Nine in favor, one excused.
Motion carries.
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Lysick.
I move that we stand in recess until conclusion of the committee meeting.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are in recess.